Good morning. Welcome to the September 12th City Council Meeting. This morning, we have Pastor Paul Sparks, who's the pastor at South Walker Church of Christ, who's going to lead us in our invocation, and then Councilman Mark Stonecypher will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
Dear God, our heavenly Father, thank you so much for loving us and caring for us in such a wonderful way through the blessings of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Father, we're thankful for this opportunity to be here today, to participate in the events of the day. We ask your blessing, Father, upon our fellow citizens who have been impacted by the recent hurricanes and storms, and we pray, Father, for all of our uniformed individuals, wherever they may be, in the military, in our cities, in our nations, across our nation. Father, we ask your blessing upon all of our citizens. We pray, Father, that you would be with this meeting this morning, this council meeting. Pray that everything will go indecently and in order, and everything will be according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pastor, thank you for joining us this morning. This morning, we have a special treat. We have members of the United States Navy, who are stationed at Tinker Air Force Base, joining us. Would you please join me up front? And Mike, could you join us too? I'm gonna call on you to help us with some introductions and a little bit of background as well. So, we'll begin with the clerk reading the proclamation for today.
Whereas, Greater Oklahoma City is honored to have the presence of the United States Navy in our community. Whereas, we recognize and celebrate the 25th anniversary of the United States Navy Tacmo Wing at Tinker Air Force Base. Whereas, there are more than 1,000 active-duty sailors and 200 Navy officers stationed at Tinker Air Force Base to support the Tacmo mission with the Navy's E-6B aircraft. There are 400 active-duty and reserve sailors, assigned to 15 different reserve units at Navy Operational Support Center, and 45 Navy recruiters stationed throughout Greater Oklahoma City. Whereas, the United States Navy has an annual economic impact of over $100 million in the Greater Oklahoma City area. Whereas, Oklahoma City was chosen as an official 2017 Navy Week City, and will host special events and personnel from the Navy, including the United States Navy Band Southeast. Whereas, the citizens of Oklahoma City also take great pride in supporting our namesake marine submarine, the USS Oklahoma City, and the USS Oklahoma Memorial at Pearl Harbor. Whereas, OKC Navy Days will sponsor the 4th Annual OKC Navy Golf Classic, hosting 100 local active-duty sailors and officers at Galardea Country Club. Whereas, sailors will be honored at the annual OKC Navy Ball on October 6th at the Chevy Bricktown Events Center, which is sponsored by the Oklahoma City Chamber and the Oklahoma City Navy League. Now therefore, Mick Cornett, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the occasion of the aforementioned events to be United States Navy Days in Oklahoma City.
Please join me in showing our appreciation to these men and ladies of the United States Navy. Now, Commodore, before I turn it over to you, I'm gonna first ask Mr. McAuliffe to give a few words, giving some background in his longstanding efforts with the United States Navy. So, Mike, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We started Navy Days 12 years ago, and the reason we started Navy Days is people didn't realize we do have the Navy in Oklahoma City, and we have 1,200 sailors, active-duty sailors, out there at the Navy Wing. It's a great complex, it's just hard to see. It sits in the back of the base, so I encourage people who haven't had the chance to see the wing to call, and they'll set up a tour. It's a great facility. The Navy has over $100 million impact on the community every year. And again, just because we don't have battleships, although I tell people there's a submarine at Lake Hefner, even though we don't have battleships here, we do have the Navy flying the Navy planes. So, we're just honored to have the Navy in our city. That's why we do Navy Days every year, to recognize their presence in Oklahoma City, their contributions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Captain McCabe, who's, we're fortunate, he's been here with us in Oklahoma City a number of years, and that's not usual. And so, we're happy and we appreciate you being here and your leadership out at the Navy Wing.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Thank you. Hi. Well, thank you, and good morning. I just wanted to say, you know, we've got 1,200 sailors here in Tacmo. Take charge and move out. That's our moniker for the big white Whisper Jet that you all see flying over the beautiful skies of Oklahoma. And for 25 years, we've had a fantastic relationship with Oklahoma City, specifically in the Oklahoma City area in particular. 1,200 of our nation's finest young men and young women, their sons and daughters, serving the Navy here every day. So I just ask people to remember that. Oklahoma City Navy Days, thank you for the proclamation, and then Monday's the kickoff for Oklahoma City Navy Week. Oklahoma City Navy Week, sorry. But a great time, but a great relationship, 25 years strong. I'm looking forward to 25 more years of great relationship, and I thank you from all my sailors.
Yes, now, can we introduce the rest of your team?
Absolutely, would love to. You know what? I'll hand them the microphone and let them do it. Master Chief?
If you give your hometown also.
I'm Jeff Bottoms, I'm from Copper's Cove, Texas.
Petty Officer Mason Johnson from Waco, Texas.
Good morning. I am Petty Officer Josh Holland from Wynder, Georgia.
Petty Officer Natalie Richards from Orville, Ohio.
Petty Officer Nadia Harris from Titusville, Florida.
Bob Holland from Albany, Georgia, but I retired last year, and now I'm a resident of Oklahoma City.
going to ask City Manager Couch to call upon Chief Kelly to give us an update on how the City of Oklahoma City is assisting with the relief and recovery efforts of Hurricane Harvey, and perhaps even Hurricane Irma as things develop. So, City Manager Couch, any additional comments?
Chief Kelly is here to provide such an update. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Vice Mayor, City Manager, Council, thank you very much for having me here today. I'm Richard Kelly, and I'm Fire Chief, and thank you for the opportunity to give a brief overview of our response to Hurricane Harvey. We have a PowerPoint here, we'll get started real quick, and we'll show you what we've been able to accomplish. Basically, we were called upon to provide a seven-day response to Hurricane Harvey, and I'll go through the timeline of how it played out. Before our deployment, we initially were contacted from the Oklahoma State Office of Emergency Management, alerting Oklahoma Task Force One of a potential EMAC response, which is called Emergency Management Assistance Compact Request for Hurricane Harvey, and this would be after landfall. The request was for a NIMs Type 1 Swiftwater Team. A NIMs Type 1 Swiftwater Team is 14 personnel. Our policy internally is anytime we deploy any assets, we always input law enforcement capability with that, so we have force protection, and we learned that from past history of after Katrina and other events that we responded to throughout the nation. Oklahoma Task Force One is considered the urban search and rescue team, and we housed one out of Oklahoma City in Tulsa. And the EMAC response is basically a state-to-state mutual aid request. Three days after the Hurricane Harvey made landfall, we had a formal request that was made to Oklahoma City to send a Type 1 Swiftwater Team. This was followed up at 6:30 a.m. on the 28th of August with a formal written request, and that's what we require, anytime before we'll deploy any assets, it's gonna be a written request. And on 8:00 a.m. on the 28th, we, 16 personnel departed for Katy, Texas. It's important to note that they were one of five Type 1 Swiftwater Teams that were being deployed to Texas at the time. The other two was from Tulsa, one from Bryan County, and one from Pittsburgh County. Of the 16 personnel, nine of them were comprised of Oklahoma City firefighters, two of them were Oklahoma City police officers, two of them were from Edmund Fire, and two of them were from Norman Fire, and one was from Mustang Fire. And that's what's nice about the task force, it doesn't tax one jurisdiction to respond and provide assistance, whether it's in Oklahoma City, or the metro, or anywhere. This is a good picture of the 16 personnel that were deployed to Texas, and it's, again, this team, they were great ambassadors for our city and state. As you'll see in the presentation, they truly embodied what we consider the Oklahoma standard, and what we come to know and understand. Initially, the task force, as I said earlier, was deployed to Katy, Texas. En route, they were switched over to actually respond to the AT&amp;T Center in San Antonio, Texas. They had to stage there overnight, as you can imagine, this was an overwhelming event, so they had to stage and prepare and get all the resources coming in to where they could actually put them in the right location. The next morning, they woke up, and they were actually deployed to College Station. But as they were there in San Antonio, Texas, the five incident, the Type 1 Swiftwater Teams actually increased to 124 personnel and 24 boats. And where this became interesting, actually, one of our battalion chiefs that was deployed with the team, Mike Walker, he actually was placed in charge of that entire task force. So what started at 16 is now grown to 124 personnel with 24 boats. On the next day, as I said, on the 29th of August, we were sent to College Station, Texas. We're immediately checked in in what they call their ESF 9, which is their Urban Search and Rescue portion of their state OEM. From there, we were immediately sent to the west area of Houston, it's called the Memorial City Mall area. At 5:00 p.m., we arrived there on the 29th, and at 6:30 p.m., we hit the ground running, and we were actually providing assistance to the residents of Houston. During this operational period, it was interesting, because the state of Texas had asked us if we could have two elected officials go along with the task force, and we had Senator Brian Hughes and Representative Cole Hefner that was actually there riding along with us, and they were not only riding, they were actually assisting. During this operational period, which ended at 2:30 a.m., we had 90 evacuations and four rescues. We also established a base of operations, which is our sleeping area rehab, where we could take care of our assets there at the Memorial City Mall. The interesting point on that to note is FEMA, when you hear the word evacuation, FEMA wanted us to be clear and consistent, so evacuations are considered removal of residents that are not in harm's way. Anytime you have a rescue, that's a person that were, or resident that was in harm's way, or they perceived they were in harm's way. This picture here is a picture of Senator Hughes and Representative Hefner, again, they were instrumental and eager to help out during the deployment. This picture right here is very interesting, because it was actually a Google map taking after Hurricane Harvey made landfall. And you can see, that was the area we were operating in, and you can tell, that is the Lakeside Country Club, and if you can zoom, we can't zoom in, because it's a PowerPoint, but you can actually zoom in on that, and the clubhouse is entirely underwater. So that, as you heard on the news and all the different reports, that is the Buffalo Bayou that everyone talked about, the river that ran into downtown Houston, and that was the area that we were operating in. On August 30th was one of our busier days. We started operations at 8:00 a.m. We were reporting under the Houston Fire Department, and actually, the FEMA incident support teams in that area. And on that day, we had 534 evacuations, 36 rescues, 109 pet evacuations, and we concluded our operational period at 9:22 p.m. What's interesting to note in this picture here, this was an actual rescue that we did perform. We have a lot of pictures of it, that victim was actually trapped on that sign there in water that was over their head, and there was nothing around them, and our personnel actually came upon that and was able to rescue that victim. On August 31st, again, we had continued operations, again, under the Houston Fire Department and FEMA IST, and you can see on this day, our Oklahoma Task Force actually escalated to 176 personnel and 35 boats, and that was extra resources that arrived from the state of Oklahoma. The state of Texas made it very clear, any assets that came into the area from Oklahoma would be put under our task force, so it'd be one reporting person that they could talk to and make it easier for their span of control. This escalated, again, that day was one of our slower days, just because it was a transition period for the Houston Fire Department and their command structure. We only had 124 evacuations, seven rescues, and 22 pet evacuations, and at 7:00 p.m. we concluded our operations. This is an interesting picture here, this is actually one of the evacuations, you can just see a two-boat system there. We actually have the front boat that's motorized, the rear boat is not motorized, but they were kind of a taxi, and that was just so they could multiply and get more residents out when they went to do an evacuation. This is a great picture here, this is the picture of the entire task force at full strength of 176 personnel. Again, as I said earlier, Battalion Chief Mike Walker from our department was placed in charge of the entire task force. So what initially started out as 16 personnel multiplied into a large group of rescuers from Oklahoma. And not just Chief Walker, we had other personnel from our department that played key leadership roles in that, and also from the Tulsa Fire, so it was a good collective effort in that response. On September 1st, this was a transition period, this is when we're starting to see the slowdown on evacuations and rescues, and we started getting prepared for a door-to-door search. So, they multiplied our task force. Again, we received more assets from the state of Kansas, Missouri, and Tennessee that actually reported to our task force. So at that day, our personnel escalated to 310 personnel and 70 boats, and again, we're operating about a 15-square-mile area. Slow day due to the transition process, we had 23 evacuations, two rescues, and 11 pet evacuations. One thing that's interesting to note in this, of 310 personnel, our average staffing daily in Oklahoma City is 222 personnel. So you can kind of see, just in that 15-square-mile area, the amount of resources it was required to respond and take care of that situation. On September 2nd, at 7:00 a.m., we hit the ground running, and this is where we started our actually systematic door-to-door searches, in that 15-square-mile area we were talking about. And at the end of the day, we were able to search and check 4,279 structures, we had 122 evacuations and 22 pet evacuations. We concluded operations that day, about 6:38 p.m., where it actually finished all that we'd been assigned. We began our demobilization process and prepared our personnel for departure. After a good night's rest, the next morning, at 10:00 a.m., we departed Houston, headed back to Oklahoma City, and at 6:30 p.m. we arrived at the Fire Training Center. So in conclusion, in our response and seven-day deployment, we had a total of 893 evacuations, 45 rescues, 168 pet evacuations, and we cleared 4,279 structures. So in closing, I would like to thank the council and city leadership for your continued support of public safety, and at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Chief Kelly? Chief Kelly, very impressive. Please extend our appreciation to all the men and women that participated in this. You did a great service and set a great example for both the City of Oklahoma City and the state of Oklahoma, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I was just gonna ask you, was some of the training for the swiftwater rescue performed at our whitewater facility, is that?
The answer is yes. Do you want more details?
I don't need a lot more, I just, you know, think it's important for people to know that since we've installed that facility on the river, we've been able to train lots of firefighters in swiftwater rescue, and we see a perfect example of how that could be used.
Yes, ma'am. We have a great relationship with them, and we work with them all the time, so a lot of the personnel that responded were trained at that facility.
Thank you so much.
And we do have personnel down in Florida also.
Oh, good. Well, thank you again. Okay, moving on, that concludes the Office of the Mayor. We will now look at the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 29th, 2017. Item B is the approval of the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 15th, 2017. Okay. Vote. It passes unanimously. Next is request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, a few, starting on page 21, under item 9JA1. Item B, 2016 Edinburgh, we ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item C, 2121 West U-Banks, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item E is 1916 Northwest 7th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item L is 1211 Northwest 42nd Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. And item M, 308 Northwest 83rd Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. And then moving to item 9K1. Item B, 2016 Edinburgh Drive, Edinburgh Drive, we ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item C, 1916 Northwest 7th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item H, 1211 Northwest 42nd Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. And finally, item I, 308 Northwest 83rd Street, we ask that that be stricken, again, the owner secured.
Thank you. Are there any other uncontested continuance? We don't vote on that, do we, clerk? Okay, thank you. Next items are revocable permits. The first one, revocable permit for the Vietnamese-American community of Oklahoma City and metro area, 2017 Lunar Moon Festival. Is there some, yes, sir, please, join us. And if you'll give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Tin Nguyen. I operate insurance agency on 2423 North Claussen. I am the Special Events Coordinator for the Vietnamese-American Community of Oklahoma City. This is Mr. Michael Doe, and he's the Chairman of the Vietnamese-American Community.
Great.
Good morning. My name is Min Michael Doe, and I'm the President of the Vietnamese Community here in Oklahoma City.
Great. Can you tell us a little bit about the activity?
Yes, annually, every year, on the 15th day of the 8th month, the lunar calendar is when the moon is full, and so this is the second most celebrated festival in the Vietnamese culture. This year, we have the honor of presenting this festival at Military Park. We wanted to open it to the community, embrace connection, and unite all of our communities together.
Great. Okay, let's see, it's in Word 2. Okay, thank you. All right. And it's been approved unanimously. Thank you.
Could I add?
Oh, yes, please.
Usually, our festival, we have that event at Will Rogers Park, but this year, seeing we are being elected officer for the Vietnamese community, and we want to grow our Asian District, and we also know that there's a map project linked to the Asian District, so we working with, not only with Vietnamese, we try, we expand our relationship with different association as well. So the Lunar Moon Festival this year will be consisted of not only Vietnamese, it's gonna be to the Chinese, the Philippine, Indian, so this can be a bigger event, and we would like to open it to our, you know, our neighbor here in Oklahoma City, and we want to attract more attention to the Asian District as well. So we do appreciate for your support in making this event possible. Thank you so much.
Yes, it sounds very nice. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next item is with the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation for a portion of the eastern basin of the Oklahoma River, October 1st through September 30th, 2018. Is there someone here on that event? Okay. Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded, passes unanimously. Next is the Alzheimer's Disease and Related Disorders Association to hold the Walk to End Alzheimer's, and, let's see, Herb? Yes, sir. Would you please tell us a little bit about the event?
Sure. My name is Herb Magley, and I'm the Chair for the Walk this year. Normally, you'd have the manager, but she managed to have a baby here a few weeks ago, and so you get stuck with me.
Okay.
The Walk, I think this is the 15th year of the Walk, and the last nine years, we've had it at the ballpark, but we've grown to the point, last year, we had 8,500 walkers, and we expect to have 9,000 to 10,000 this year. So we've moved it over here to Bicentennial Park, and which will be a lot more fitting and help us as we grow. That's part of our mission, is to make sure that people who get this disease know about it, and know that there's an association that's there to help them. And the reason why I'm here is, my wife managed, she was diagnosed when she was 54-years-old, and went through 11 years, and died about a year and a half ago. And so I gave up my job and my career to be a full-time volunteer, to make sure that other caregivers know what to do, because it's a lot different caregiving with this. But the reason I'm here is because of the Alzheimer's Association, they save the lives of a lot of us caregivers. And the reason, the Alzheimer's Association is here is because of that walk. That's the thing that raises the funds, that keeps the doors open, some of the money goes to research, but a lot of it stays here to help people like me and my wife and 63,000 other people here in Oklahoma that have the disease, and 150,000 people that are caregivers. So, it's an important event, and we really appreciate the support that you've given us in the past on this, and we would very much be honored if you'd all attend this year. It's a pretty interesting event, when thousands of people are holding up their flowers, you know, and Lance West is the emcee for it. It starts, it's September 30th, it starts at 7:30 in the morning. The formal presentations start at 9 o'clock by Lance West, and then the Walk is at 9:30.
Okay, great. Well, it's a great organization and a great event. Meg?
Yes, certainly. It is in Word 6, and I would move approval. I'm really excited to have you down at Bicentennial Park. It'll be great.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, voting, it's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Monarch Madness 5K. Do we have someone here? Great, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, guys, for your service to our community as well. My name is Carrie Ralston, and I'm representing DG Productions, and we're proud to partner with Oklahoma City Zoo this year. We're gonna be timing and managing the first Monarch Madness 5K. So this is the first benefit for the zoo. Funds will be raised to go to the butterfly conservatories. Did you know the monarch butterfly is endangered?
I didn't.
Uh-huh. So, the 5K route is to simulate their monarch butterflies, 4,000 route from Canada to Mexico during the winter months. So, we will be having this event September 23rd on a Saturday. 5K will start at 8:00, and then we will have a one-mile fun run at 8:30 in the zoo. So, it's $35 for adults, 25 for children, and all participants will get a finish-your-medal t-shirt and a free pass to the zoo.
Oh, that sounds great.
So, I hope you guys will come out and join us, and bring your wings, they say.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you. John? Okay. It's been moved and seconded, it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the JDRF One Walk, and Carrie?
Hello. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. My name is Carrie Heine, I'm the Development Coordinator at the JDRF Oklahoma Chapter. JDRF was formerly the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, if anyone didn't know, we just go by the acronym now. We are holding our annual One Walk, used to be called the One Walk to Cure Diabetes. So, our organization is walking to fundraise to find a cure for Type 1 diabetes.
Great.
And it is on Saturday, September 16th. Walk begins at 9:00 a.m., and we're holding it at the Chicasaw Bricktown Bot Park.
That sounds great. John? John, we have another event in your ward?
Excellent, move for approval.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and seconded, and it's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the final one is the Uptown 23rd District Association, Uptown Fund 5K. Good morning.
I'm Amanda Delatorre with the Uptown 23rd District Association. This is our very first 5K, so we partnered with Mesa Park, our neighbors, and the after-party for the runners will be at the 22nd Annual Mesa Festa. So our run will begin at 10:00 AM, it should be completely done by 11:00 AM, and Mesa Festa will start at 12:00 noon.
Correct.
We've worked very closely with them, and with the OKC Police Department. We'll have 16 police officers monitoring our race that is running through the residential area of Mesa Park and Heritage Hills. We'll also have about 15 volunteers along the race to guide our runners. And if we're lucky, we'll have about 200 runners on the field that day. Uh, local running celebrity Mark Bravo will be announcing the race that just developed. And we have a charity partner in the Muscular Dystrophy Association of OK, uh, that we'll split our proceeds with. Uh, half will go to Uptown, half will go to NDA.
That's great.
Would move approval.
Okay, thank you, it's been moved and seconded, and it's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
So, now we will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Move down, second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, and it's approved unanimously. So we will now adjourn the OC-MFA, and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Move the items.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Voting? It's approved unanimously. We will adjourn the OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and we just have the claims and payroll.
Move down, second.
Okay, moved and seconded, it's approved unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT, and reconvene council meeting.
Move the items, subject to individual consideration?
Okay, it's been, the consent docket has been moved and seconded, are there any individual Okay, voting? And now we're moving into the concurrence docket.
Move the items.
Any discussion? Voting? And it's approved unanimously. Next items are items requiring separate votes, and the first is, uh, item A in Ward 6.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, this item is a, um, very small closure, uh, just off of 16th Street. Um, the resident is, uh, wanting to put a fence, uh, along the property, and it turns out it's in the street right-of-way, by 8.69 feet. And, um, so this was approved by the Planning Commission, uh, with no protest, I would move approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, it's approved unanimously. Next is item B, ordinance on final hearing, and this is the, uh, issue related to court fees.
That's correct, state-mandated court fees.
Right. Any discussions?
Need a minute?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, it's been moved, it's seconded. Okay, voting, and it's approved unanimously. The next is a public hearing on the, um, assessment role for the Stockyards, uh, City Business Improvement District. And Carolina, would you please, uh, share with us any thoughts that you have on, on that item?
Well, I'm kinda thrown into this, so, um, my mother just passed away in June, so this is now all mine.
Okay.
So forgive me if I'm new to this. I just get this notice of hearing, and reviewing of this. I'd kinda like to know a little more information, because what it says is enhanced sidewalk cleaning, staffing of a management office, and provision of a marketing campaign. I know between Cattlemen's, Stockyards itself, and the Heritage Festival, we get a lot of marketing for the Stockyards. Between that, and the approval of the roads, when, which widened it out, and took some of the property to put a new easement on there. So it reduced my parking lot by quite a bit. Between that, why are we approving sidewalk cleaning? That's part of the road systems, that's part of the map systems, that's part of our state taxes anyway. So I have to go against it, because we've never had sidewalk cleaning, it's been in our family for over 150 years, and not once have that been cleaned, or have a management campaign, or an employee for it. So I've gotta question that.
Uh, Kim, Kim, did you wanna?
Good morning, here's Councilman Cooperhart with Planning. Morning, ma'am. Also have the Stockyards City Board President and Executive Director here. Um, the sidewalk cleaning, I'll just mention this, it's only done on the main street of the district, so you may not have seen sidewalk cleaning if you're on a side street.
I am on the main street.
You are on the main street.
I am on Agnew.
Yes. We'll ask them to talk about when they do the sidewalk cleaning, I know it's several times a year, two times a year, folks?
First week of May.
First week of May? Okay, thank you. And what other questions can I ask, answer for you?
Well, again, marketing. We, I, I just had a sister come in from North Carolina, and Aunt came in from South Carolina, they knew where the Stockyards was. So by marketing, it's not feasible to tax us as landowners for a marketing campaign that the business owners already supply. So why are we double-deucing that?
Well, I will tell you, and Kelly, maybe you could speak to this a little bit, is that the marketing campaign that Stockyards City Main Street does is for the entire district, they work with our CVB, our Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we do buskins, we've done billboards, all sorts of things for all of the events that bring people down to the Stockyards district throughout the year. And individual businesses certainly do their own advertising, and the bid does not pay for that, but it pays for the district-wide attraction, and I'll have to say that it's been a pretty good success.
Well, I can ask you one question.
Sure.
And you can ask it throughout a lot of United States. Do you know where Cattlemen's are? The Cattlemen's Steakhouse, everybody knows it. So, right there, between the Oklahoma Travelers, AAA, and all these other businesses that promote the Stockyards, why are we putting money into a fund that is double-deucing? Okay, it's, it's double funding, and that's not fair for us as landowners, because our taxes keep going up, even though we lost some of our land with the city widening. Yes, we needed it, but we don't need to, let's figure out a different way, not these. These three things seem irrelevant.
I understand your point in that it can seem like double-dipping, but the amount of advertising and promotion that Stockyards Main Street does for the whole district is above and beyond what any individual merchant could do. Now, Cattlemen's is a bit of an exception, they've been on diners, drive-ins, dives, and, you know, they're kind of world-famous at this point. Uh, the rest of the businesses and the rest of the district on Stockyards always needs a little more help to bring people there, and I think Kelly's doing a fantastic job. Kelly, maybe you have a couple words about some of your marketing strategies that you could share with Ms.?
Thank you all for having us here today. I appreciate you being here, too. I'm new in the position, very, very excited about learning more about the bid and what Main Street has to offer. We have a fantastic opportunity with the bid and with Main Street to allow different resources, we have a expanded, uh, array of resources to come in, whether it's, while we can't, as a bid, do individual marketing for a specific company, much like Kim mentioned, Cattlemen's has had excellent exposure because of who they are. Uh, we are working to do some other, uh, district-wide marketing opportunities for the year, with, as Kim said, CVB, Travel Oklahoma, and we've got some other folks that are interested in coming in and really showcasing the district. I'm happy to sit down with you privately and discuss all the things that we can do to help you.
Well, I know, I know that Travel Oklahoma, AAA, and all those, those are free, uh, so that, those aren't money, as far as cost-wise, because, and then Gazette has it in there, and like I said, a lot of the businesses itself, Langston's and so forth, still advertise. So by, I, again, you're, you're double, putting double money into the same district, because, again, Stockyards isn't that large. And so we've already got marketing, again, everywhere, just from the local businesses, and then we have our heritage, uh, parades and everything else through the Stockyards. So why are we marketing, again, on top of what marketing is happening already?
I, I think I understand, um, but Langston's, you know, all these businesses have a right to advertise their own company.
Absolutely.
And they will say their location. So, but as a whole, with the Business Improvement District, we, we want to advertise for the, for the area as a whole, for tourists to come in, um, Cattlemen's, that's buy and sell at Oklahoma National Stockyards, and that's what we're tied to, so it's showcasing the area as a whole. I can't stop a, a merchant from advertising on their own.
I know, but we, us as landlords shouldn't be paying a marketing campaign for something that is already happening. It's like buying two cars of the exact same car. You, you understand where I'm coming?
I do.
Because, uh, you're not, the businesses have that right.
Sure.
Okay, that is out of their pocketbook, to promote their business. How many businesses are actually in the Stockyards that are promoting? Swan's has been there way over 200-years, Langston's has been there way over 100-years, Cattlemen's has been over there over 150-years. My parking lot's been in the family for over 150, almost 200-years. And then the Stockyards has been there way, way long ago, 300, 400-years ago. So between that, they wouldn't have survived without their own marketing. So it is known, we shouldn't be taxed on it, if we wanna promote our location, our area, our heritage, then we have that right, but we shouldn't be paying it twice.
If I could, Kim, possibly, um, you know, this, our city is, um, very lucky to have business improvement districts in many areas around the city, and the purpose is really to promote, as Kim and Kelly were saying, the district as a whole. Every individual business may or may not choose to advertise, but the opportunity for the merchants, property owners, to get together and collectively market their district to attract tourists and Oklahoma Cityans alike to come visit their district, and hopefully enjoy the restaurants and spend money in your stores, um, is the purpose of the Business Improvement District. It provides a level of service over and above what the city is doing and what individual property owners are doing. And it's a way to do that on a, on a fairly limited scale, I, I don't know what the total bid is.
It's about $100,000 for the district per year.
For the district as a whole.
Yeah.
And I, I actually think Stockyards was the very first, uh, Business Improvement District in the city. It was also the very first, um, urban Main Street program in the state, which I believe personally accounts for a lot of the success of the district. We look at why people know Stockyards as they are, and it's because of this collective effort, with all the property owners getting together.
Right, but, you know, you were just saying, as businesses collectively, that would be a business association in order to do that, not for the city?
Well, that's exactly what this is. It is a business association, and it's a situation where, uh, more than 50% of the property owners voted to participate in the Business Improvement District, and to self-assess a tax, just as they have in the Plaza District, just as they have on Automobile Alley, just as they have in Brooktown, and all of these other districts have done, the Western Avenue Merchants Association has all done the same thing. We really appreciate you coming down, and I would encourage you to visit with, um, staff and talk about some of the things that would be able to assist your business, um, as you continue to grow in the Stockyards.
It's not a business, that's what I'm getting at. It is a parking lot, um, and for that, I've got, you know, 30-feet or 50-feet of sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
I have yet to see anybody clean them.
Well, we'll talk about, I mean, you can talk about that with the staff.
You know, but I, I have to go against this.
I appreciate you coming down, I truly do, and, and thank you for your time.
Yeah, Ms. Ralston, thank you for, uh, your comments. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'd like to.
So moved.
I own the property here.
Okay.
And I don't think it is right for them to charge us, we've been paying for the last 10-years.
Yeah, sir.
My name is Sam Hamani.
Okay, and your address, please?
Uh, 1927 to 1933 Exchange Avenue, and 1907 Exchange.
Okay.
We have two pieces of property. I've been paying for the last 10-years. I have not seen any improvement except two-by-two, uh, grassy area I've been mowed for front of my building. And, um, I believe in that we must preserve our American heritage, we must do the things which we need to do, but the way, uh, I, I don't have a problem in paying, I've been paying for the last 10-years, you know?
Yes, sir.
So, but I think it needs to be better organized, it needs to be having, uh, to attract the more tourists, which we are not doing it, there's no facilities to attract the tourists, or there is no facilities to even housing more people, or there is no much more retail than, which has been there for hundreds of years. So I think it'd be better that, uh, this would be postponed till all the majority of the people come up with a better idea, there's how to improve the district.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hamani, I would really encourage you, the board chairman is here, I would encourage you to get involved and help with develop some of these ideas.
My head, I had a one-meeting, and I raised the same concern, but I don't see any result.
Keep at it. Please, please participate in the process, because that's what it's all about.
Yes, I understand, but, uh, I, I think it should be postponed till everybody agrees this, what we need to do there, and they come up with a more robust plan, that's how they're going to do it, because we didn't see any benefit in the past 10-years. I think 10-years is a long period of time.
Uh, we'll talk offline, uh, I know Councilwoman, uh, Salyer has a concern for the Stockyards area, as I do too, and maybe we can join your next meeting and, and share some thoughts from our perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you, it's been approv, uh, it's been moved, is there a second? Been moved and seconded? Voting, it's approved unanimously. Item D is a related item, it's the adopting and setting the assessment role for 2017 through 18.
Move down.
It's been moved and seconded, and it's approved unanimously. Item E is a resolution creating the Western Avenue Business Improvement Assessment District in Oklahoma City. And we have Rick Satra?
Satra.
Satra, thank you.
My name's Rick Satra, I've got a, um, import car repair shop on the corner of 37th and Northwestern. We've had that for 30-years, and the strange thing that Western Avenue District's been going on for 10-years, and all the information that goes up and down the street, we have never got any kind of recognition. They have maps that show the businesses up and down Western, they have got, um, whenever, I've seen a couple of those maps, and it has our, our address blank. We pay the, the, uh, the fee every year, and we get no recognition for our business. And I thought, that's not even fair, because if it's Western Avenue District, then it's for everybody to be recognized. They have functions up and down the street, we never get anything in the mail. And I think, if, if this is for the area, then it needs to be for everybody, and if it's not a benefit, then they need to make sure that it's not in existence anymore. We've, you know, you just do your job every day, and you do what you're supposed to do, and it's sort of like, if, if we were the judge in any kind of issue, if we don't follow through and do our job, we are not. through and do our job, we are not, we're not going to get the benefit if we don't do our job. So, if the Western Avenue District is there for the benefit of the people, they're not doing their job, they need to give the money back to all the people that's not, I like, they have street cleaning, I mean, not around our place, or sidewalk cleaning, or, you know, whatever the benefit's for. The Western Avenue District is not, I mean, there's two or three members I've talked to that, that don't get any results, and I've never got any results. My wife and I, you know, we've been on, had our location for 30 years, so I thought, if this is my day to come talk, then that's what needs to happen, because if we get no benefit, then it's not the way it's supposed to be. So, you all probably have know where our shop is, but it's kind of a thing that, that everybody has to be recognized. If not, they need to, they need to have accountability. We have accountability at our business, and if we don't do our job, we don't get paid. And that's the way it's gotta go. So, I, I don't know what else to do. I thought, I'm just gonna come over and y'all need to know. If, if you all don't do your job, they'll vote you out. If we don't do our job, the judge will say, you have to reimburse those people for not doing your job. And that's what's, that's what's happened to the Western Avenue District. It's not, it's not coming up with what they said they were gonna do. And that's kind of why I had to come up and take a couple hours and just tell you what, the way it is. Not everybody's that way, but our business sure is, so.
Yes, sir.
And I, that's, yes, sir?
Your business is one block north of 36th Street on the west side of the road?
Yes, it is.
And what is the name of the business?
It's called Autobahn Foreign Car Repair Incorporated.
And is it owned by you and your wife?
What?
Is it owned by you and your wife?
Yes, it is.
And what, what are your all's names?
Satrae.
Okay. And you've been in business for over 30 years?
What?
Been in business for over 30 years?
We started in 79.
Well, we thank you for being a fine company in Oklahoma City.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Hey, my name's Abel Blakely. I'm with the president of the Western Avenue Association. I also own Savory Spice Shop at 43rd and Western. And to respond to Mr. Satrae, I do owe you apology, Mr. Satrae. As the president of the Western Avenue Association, which is completely separate from the bid, we have obviously not done you the good of service at putting your business on the maps and, and following through with the promotional things that we try to provide with everyone up and down Westside. So, I do apologize for that. And we more than welcome you to come to our board meetings and speak to us about ways that we can help you improve your business. Absolutely, completely, more than happy to do that. What I'm here to do is to kind of speak to the Business Improvement District. The Business Improvement District has been in effect for the last 10 years. My business, Savory Spice Shop, has been there only for the last five. I've been on the Western Avenue Association Board, again, completely separate in the t, for the last four, and serving as president this year. And in the last 10 years, we have done all that we can to provide opportunities for new retail, for activities on the street, for festivals, for events, and that sort of thing as an association. But what the bid does is provide things like, like you were speaking to, street cleaning, security, paying the maintenance people that benefits the street as a whole. And what we're trying to do with the bid is to allow some additional funds to help keep the street clean and safe and a good place for people to come visit. And that influx of people that will come visit for the street is like that. I see, and, and over 50% of the frontage properties along Western Avenue sees as a huge benefit to the area. I've seen that it's grown enormously in the last 10 years, and right now, what we're trying to do is to keep that alive and keep that momentum going forward for the next 10. I've also been asked by the owners of the three corners at 36th and Western, I had some substantia and three other, I can't remember their names, but he's sitting in my spot in the association meeting right now so that I can come down here and talk to you. They have seen their retail businesses on those three, three of the four corners of 36th grow substantially through the last 10 years as a result of the, partially the result is a lot of the bid money, people coming through and seeing the businesses and drawing more attention to the district. So, Western Avenue Association, myself, and over 50% of the members up and down that street are highly in favor of this.
Thank you. Okay, so this is Ward Two item. Councilman Shadid's not with us this morning.
I agree.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, voting, and it's approved unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you for both coming down to speak to us this morning. Next item is Item F, is a resolution describing, establishing, and creating the increment district number 12, the Wheeler District Project, and that's in South Oklahoma City along Southwestern Avenue. Meg?
Jim, is there any discussion about this?
This is the, the actually setting the clock going for the, for the Wheeler District is, this is the, the next step in the process, if you will.
Got it. I would move approval.
Okay. Voting, and it's approved unanimously. Next is Item G. It's an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing September 26th and final hearing on October 10th, and it has to do with.
Insulation.
Insulation, inspection of insulation. So.
David Adcock is here, our chief.
Yes, good morning. My name is David Adcock. I'm manager of Development Center in the Development Services Department. Want to take a few minutes to give you a little information about this proposed ordinance. The current adopted building code for residential construction is the International Residential Code, and the title of Chapter 11 of that code is Energy Efficiency. And within that chapter is the minimum standard for insulation. And this ordinance being introduced establishes a permit and inspection process with the intent to ensure compliance with that minimum standard, as we do with our other building-related codes. Due to the logistics of the construction process, a wall insulation inspection would be in addition to the inspections currently performed and would also require our inspectors to make an additional trip to the site. With that, we are adding two additional building inspectors to help with the additional workload that this would, would create. Insulation contractors would be required to obtain a permit and request an inspection once they've completed the wall insulation. There are some nationally recognized energy conservation programs that are above the minimum standard, and those would be recognized and accepted in lieu of the additional permit and inspection. The permit and inspection requirements in this ordinance are for the contractors that are in the business of installing insulation. This ordinance also allows for homeowners to add insulation to their homes without a permit. The Development Center has been working with the Central Oklahoma Home Builders Association regarding this ordinance, and it's with their support that we introduced this ordinance today. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess that was gonna be my question. Installation contractors, have they seen this? Have they had input?
They have.
On board?
We, we met and actually had a meeting at the offices of the Central Oklahoma Home Builders Association. They invited their contractors that do their insulation, and we talked about this and what the fees are and what the, what the process is and.
Do you know if post-construction testing can take the place of this?
Yes, that's what I meant when I said, there are some above-code programs, energy conservation codes, and that's what it is. It's a performance testing on the building that these companies provide. And, of course, they're, again, they're nationally recognized, and we would look at that to make sure that, that everything is, is through that certification. But yes, it is a, is actually a, what they do, a blower door test and things like that for air leakage, and it's a performance test.
And what does that process look like? I mean, I'm just curious, because if I'm doing a post-test, right, then how do I, how am I able to waive that? Or can I waive the fee during? I'm trying to figure out how we keep from doing this trickle-down.
Right. The builder, the builder would indicate that on his application process. We have that set up in our application process, that they would indicate that they are doing the performance testing. And then, at the end of that, there are certified raters through that program that they would have to then provide us with that certification for that building.
For the occupancy permit?
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks. Whoops. Any other questions? So, this is ordinance just to be introduced. Do we have a motion?
There's the item, second.
Okay, voting. It's approved unanimously. Thank you, David. Next item is Item H, ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on September 26th and final hearing on October 24th.
And this is an agreement with Cox Cable regarding their franchise agreement, and Zach Nash is here this morning to give us an overview of this item.
My name is Zach Nash in Public Information and Marketing. I'm the Communication and Marketing Manager. I'm here today to briefly discuss the, the franchise with Cox Communication. Public Information and Marketing, with the assistance, assistance of the Municipal Counselor's Office, we manage the city's cable television franchise, as well as the, the video programming service agreement. I'd first like to take this opportunity to recognize Robbie Swires with Cox Communication. She's the government regulatory affairs and government manager for Cox. So, Public Information not only manages the franchise, but we also serve as a liaison between Cox and our residents, who are their customers. That means when a customer has any issues or needs questions answered, they can call us to help us resolve issues or get, get any, any questions they have about, about the franchise or about their, their service. A brief history about the franchise. Oh, skipped a few, too many there. So, in 1991, we had, we went into a franchise with, a 20-year franchise with Cox Communication. We went back to a five-year agreement in 2007, as well as 2012, and in this agreement, we went, went back to a 10-year if approved. So, under the agreement, there were only minor changes from the one that was adopted in 2012. We'll, we continue to receive 5% of the Cox's gross revenues. City buildings will continue to receive complimentary cable, and they will continue to provide our government and education channels. That's Channel 20 and Channel 18. And the, really, the only major change to, to the agreement is that we extended it from five years to 10. So, if anyone has any questions, it's pretty, pretty simple change from, from 2012 and not, not many major changes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why did we go from, it started as 20, right?
Yes.
And then, we went down to five?
Yes.
Now, we're wanting to go back to 10. I'm just curious what that was for.
We shut down to five because of changes in the industry, and we wanted to make sure that we had parallel agreements between AT and Cox. So, we ended up negotiating both of those at the same time last time around, because it's changing industry, and they're kind of different animals, but we wanted the same general level of regulation.
And the purpose of extending it back to 10?
It makes both our lives easier. It, it really does. And going to 10 goes back. We actually proposed 10 in 2012, and so Cox and us agreed that that, that was probably a good step moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, last week, and Jim, maybe, I don't know whether this is something for you to address, or legal, or what, there was some publicity going around, at least it got to our house, that indicated that there was an opportunity or a possibility that the OU, Ohio State game was not going to be shown, and on our cable, a message came up that said Cox was no longer able to cover or carry Channel 5. Does anything in this provision here speak to the performance and would eliminate situations like that in the future, or is that just part of the game? You know, no, it, it doesn't, and that's part of the game, i- i- if you will. We can get involved in, in their programming and their sub-operations. It isn't any, any different than when Blue Cross and Blue Shield and Integris had a breakdown, and, and they weren't playing well together, and it could potentially have affected us. But again, it was, it's, it's a contract that we have, and, and they were honoring their contract, and yes, they had an internal dispute. It's the same thing with the Cox issue between Cox and, and the local television station. So, what I hear you saying is, we take it or leave it. We have no recourse. We have no say. They have multiple contracts with, with content providers to them, and we don't have involvement in those, in their programming and their content providers. If they don't have the content available for their, for their subscribers, then they're gonna lose subscribers. It's, it's, it's kind of an enterprise-type situation. If we were to tell them they had to have Channel ABC TV on there, they would have no leverage to negotiate with ABC TV. Yeah, well, yeah, but we had no leverage to tell them to negotiate with ABC TV, so to me, it's a catch-22. It is, although if they didn't have, if they're not providing the services they want, they're gonna, it's gonna, it's a competitive market out there, and they're gonna lose a share of the market.
I did just want to point out, that was a heck of a game, though, that they showed Saturday night.
Okay. Any other, Zach, thank you for your presentation. Any other, other questions or comments for Zach? I'll accept a motion.
Move item.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, voting, and it's approved unanimously. Next item is Item I, which is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Any comments or?
No.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, and there, it's approved unanimously. Next is Item J, I'm sorry, public hearing regarding unsecured structures.
Yes, yes. Seems like an inmane order, not likely.
Okay, well, we don't know who's gonna vote yes or no yet.
I still like, I'm still up there.
Yes, sir. Was there a particular one?
There was anyone in Ward Seven that's dealing with this guy here.
Okay.
Who I have a, not a hatred for, but disrespect greatly.
Well, I know, but we got it. Mr. Washington, we need to focus on the actual properties.
Yeah, oh, I am. I'm, I'm just telling you, that's why I'm doing it.
Okay.
Now, anyone that's see Ward Sevens, 19, 916 Northeast 20th Street, oh, excuse me, Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73111. 916 Northeast 20th Street House, Ward Seven. Mm-hmm. So, who are we talking about, turning it down, or what, what?
No, no, it's an unsecured structure.
That's what I'm saying. What are we talking about, unsecured? I mean, what do we mean by it?
They need to be secured, sir. They need to put, they need to get, secure the doors and the windows so that the people can have free access.
Okay. I'll check my doors on those there and see what's up with. Okay, 9, 1909 Northeast 24th Street. Yeah, oh, my goodness. Oh, Jesus Christ, I wouldn't want to live next door to that. Okay, let's go on. Now, that makes sense. 308 Northwest 83rd Street, House in Ward Seven.
The owner has already secured it.
Correct. Okay. Let's see, is that all I remember? Oh, yeah, dilapidated structures, okay, 2939 Northwest 18th Street, shared. Oh, excuse me, no, that's Ward Six. I, I'll deal with that later. 113 Southeast 19th Street House, Ward Seven. Some funny councilman? You're acting really professional over there.
Uh, Mr. Washington, we've already voted on Item I.
Oh, oh, did you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me see, any other Ward Sevens here?
Move the item.
Now, Ward, yeah, 429 Northwest 18th Street.
We're not on that one.
We're still on Item J.
Oh, J, oh, my goodness, okay. Well, that's, I think that's all on Item J then.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded. We will vote now, and it's approved unanimously. Next is Item K, public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Yes, sir?
Okay, we just denied abandoned buildings. 916, you just did, 916 Northeast 20th Street. Just did that one. Okay, so abandoned buildings, what's up, what are we talking about with those? 916 Northeast 20th Street, on the abandoned buildings?
Yes, sir.
What are we talking about, tearing them down? What's happening?
They'll be secured. Yeah, it's similar.
Who's going to be secured? You going to secure?
Yes, if the owner does not, yes.
Okay, so you already talked to the owners regarding possibly securing them, they don't?
We already sent notices, yes.
Okay, now, so that should be in the records of their department. 1909, oh, 920, same thing, possible, okay. Now, let's go to 429 Northwest 118th Street, Ward 7. Okay, so you contact, I'm sure you have on that. Oh my goodness. Oh, Jesus Christ, man. Well, y'all about to fold me in your area there. Okay, yeah. I've seen enough of those, okay. That's good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Motion, please?
Okay.
Okay, moved and seconded, voting, and it's approved unanimously. Next is item L, public hearing regarding removal of properties from abandoned building list.
Yes.
Been moved and seconded. It's approved unanimously. Item M, resolution receiving an amendment to the comprehensive plan changing the land use topology area in an area located southwest of East Memorial Road, I-35.
And Aubrey Gooden is here to introduce, staff member, to explain this to us.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor and Council. I wanted to introduce you to Philip Walters, who works on the planning staff. Philip is beginning to absorb some new job duties, including doing assessments for comprehensive plan amendments, and he's going to be working on some annexation and de-annexation requests. And this is a product of something that you've seen before. When we adopted Plan OKC over a year ago, one of our promises and commitments was, this is a living, breathing document. So as development happens, as our city grows and changes, as we get development requests, we evaluate any request that doesn't conform with the comprehensive plan to make changes to accommodate development that makes sense and is in keeping with the spirit of the plan. So from time to time, we process these, staff does an evaluation, which Philip will walk you through, and Planning Commission considers them, and we update our plan accordingly. So I'll hand it over to Philip to give you the background about this request.
Thank you, Aubrey, good morning. So on August 24th, Planning Commission saw this request, and now it is, before you, click the right button. Now we're in business. So the site described is there, on the south side of East Memorial, up by 35. This is also right along the edge of our city boundary with Edmund. And you can see the original site that the application was for was the 4.4-acre site in kind of the pinkish-purple outline there. And through the process of evaluation, it was determined that we should expand that to the whole blue area. You'll see some maps in a while that help explain why that seemed most appropriate. And there was an accompanying SPUD request, 992, there, to place a little office back on that purple outlined site. This is in Ward 7. So for a little more zoomed-out frame of reference, this is where we are, right up on that northern central portion of the city, in an area that's rather urban to the west and rather rural to the east. Zooming back in, the existing land use topology area is urban reserve, indicating that we think it could be appropriate for urban development, but we know that it wasn't at the time of the plan's creation, for various reasons. Here's a closer look at what's there now. You can see on our side of the line, there's a smattering of homes at a rather, somewhere between rural and urban density. It buries a fair amount of undeveloped land, but on the Edmund side of the line, it's a much more urban picture with urban-scale sewer and water served lots, some office, and ODOT has some yards there where they do some work. So that, it's important, it is outside the city, not our purview, but it's important for setting the context of this area. Also, interesting on the site, there's a lot of tree cover here. We're up in the northeast where that's really a stronger coverage of the city. And the site in question, as well as the whole area covered in the blue outline again, is rather treed. But we don't have any water pipes in the very near vicinity. Wastewater is even harder to provide, and we're right on the edge of having an urban level of fire service based on our prediction maps. And that's what's shown here. We've zoomed way back out again. The site is in the center middle there, and it looks like Station 2 could get there in an urban time, on average. So the original designation, again, was based on, there is not sewer and water service in that, or was not at the time of designation, but potentially could be. It has that great frontage on Memorial and I-35, giving it a lot of transportation access and right on that edge of strong fire service. However, over time, and this has been a few years since we set the original land use designation to Plan OKC, right? The biggest change that we've seen is that a lot of those homes have come in and changed the ever possible, ever possibility of getting true urban services there. But that context of being a quasi-urban area right up against Edmund is still there. So Planning Commission made the decision to approve the request to change it to RM, which would allow for the office development to go ahead, but in a more rural style, which was really the only, the most feasible and reasonable solution at that time. So that request, that amendment was made and approved at Planning Commission and is now before you to be received. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, that's a question, Your Honor. How many acres is that total?
The...
The proposed, proposed area, the proposed change for the larger area.
The change is that whole blue area that was originally designated urban reserve, and it's right about 58 acres as it's drawn. You could argue that some of that eastern portion of it is maybe not really usable land, that some of it's still highway right of way, but roughly 58 acres.
Thank you.
John, it's, okay, it's been moved and seconded. We'll vote now, and it's approved unanimously. Thank you. Next is item N, resolution for salary continuance. I do not believe we need executive session.
We do not?
So I'll accept a motion.
Move item 2nd.
Second? Second, okay, thank you. Voting, it's approved unanimously. Next is item O, I do not believe we need executive session.
Move item 2nd.
Thank you. Voting, it's approved unanimously. Item P, I do not believe we need executive session.
Move item 2nd.
Thank you. Voting, it's approved unanimously. Item Q, we do not need executive session.
Move item 2nd.
Voting, it's approved unanimously. Item R, we do need executive session for that, so I'll accept a motion to move into executive session for that.
Move item 2nd.
Okay, voting. Thank you. Item S, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here to speak on any of these items listed under item S?
Move item 2nd.
Thank you. Voting, it's approved unanimously. Item XA, claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on item XA?
Move item 2nd.
Thank you. Voting, it's approved unanimously. Next is items from Council. James? Larry? Todd? Meg? John? Mark?
Yes, Your Honor. Tonight is Neighborhood Night South, and it's going to be conducted all over Oklahoma City. In fact, there are 12 different homeowners associations that are conducting events in Ward 8, and I would encourage everyone that lives and is part of an HOA to show up and attend tonight. It's a good way to come together and learn more about your neighbors and learn more about things that may be affecting your neighborhood and how to improve your neighborhood. And then lastly, I'd like to say that I would encourage everyone to vote today. This is a crucial election. We fixed 88,000 potholes last year, and I think it's important that everybody look at the information and make an intelligent decision, and I hope everyone will vote today.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, good, thank you. Next is the City Manager's Report. Jim?
We have a couple of reports this morning we want to highlight. The first is our annual Leading for Results Performance Report, and Joanne McSpadden is here to present that to us this morning.
All right, good morning. Joanne McSpadden, I'm with the Budget Office, and I'm the Lead for our Leading for Results Program. Before I get into the slides, I want to show you this report real quick and kind of walk through it so you know how to use it. So this should look similar. This is the same way we presented our performance information for the budget this year. Remember, we separated it into two volumes. We had the budget section and then the performance section. So on the first two pages, I'll just point out, there's some basic information about the program and a legend that explains the symbols that are used throughout the report. And just if I can quickly walk through the first department, which is airports, you'll notice that there's a blue section at the beginning of every department. These are their long-term issues that are stated at the top, and then it leads into the strategies that are used to address those long-term issues, and then the strategic results that help us measure and track progress against those long-term issues. Moving out of the blue section, you'll see that the remainder of the performance measures for the department are listed by functional program. I will get into the presentation. I've got it here. I'm going to do a brief update on each of your seven priorities. First being the, provide a safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods. We have here the response times for our police and fire departments. I've included, under the chart, titles where it's appropriate, the page numbers that correspond to the report that you received, where you'll find this performance information along with other measures. You'll see that the police response times have remained consistent over the years. The fire department did change their measure in FY14, which is why there's no data prior to that. And they've made some improvements to their response time over the last few years by focusing on two pieces of that total, which are dispatch and turnout time. And then the improvements in each of those areas have resulted in overall performance improvement. Next, we've got to develop a transportation system that works for all residents. I'm not going to spend too much time here, because Jason Fairbrush is going to be at the next meeting to give you a full update on this priority, along with a lot of other information. I will, no, I talked to him, and the decline here is primarily the result of an increase in service hours, specifically night service, without a growth, a similar growth in ridership. So, and he'll have a lot more detail, a lot more background to share with you at the next meeting. Next, we have maintain strong financial management. If we just didn't get separated. With the election today, it seemed timely to share this with you again, that we've been able to maintain our AAA bond rating since we received an upgrade in 2009. The highest rating from both Standard and Poor's and Moody's Rating Agency allows for lower borrowing costs, which in turn provides additional funding for projects, either through interest savings or borrowing capacity. Next, we've got the enhance recreation opportunities and community wellness. And since Doug Cooper was here at the last meeting and presented all of the stuff that Parks is doing to support this, I thought I would highlight the remaining indicator, which is the wellness score. Here's a graphic of the overall wellness score from the most recent report. It's updated every three years by the Oklahoma City County Health Department, and they were nice enough to actually change this graph for me to just include Oklahoma City limits, because all of their reports are going to be Oklahoma City County. This health index was created in collaboration with Oklahoma City County Health Department, our own planning office, and the Tulsa Health Department, using data from the factors that you see listed there on the left. And the Health Department published a really nice report, it's about 175 pages, which gives a lot more information about those health factors, and I've picked up a copy of this for each of you, so it's back there in the back office for you. Next, we have to encourage a robust local economy, and I have here the most recent data for the average weekly earnings, which we know in the past has been a leading indicator for sales tax collections. And we've seen a pretty remarkable 18% increase since the recent low in July 2015. Next, we have continue to pursue social and criminal justice initiatives. And again, I know the chief was here at the last meeting, gave you all a lot of update on this. I just wanted to show this chart again, because I think it illustrates such a dramatic shift. And as the chief said at the last meeting, this is reflective of new procedures at the court and in our police department. Next, I've got high standards, uphold high standards for all city services. We actually have a presentation next on your chosen indicators for this one, so I've chose other indicators, so I won't be, we won't be redundant. First, we've got external records requests. These are facilitated and measured by the City Clerk's Office, but these are records that are actually maintained in other city departments, and city staff should be commended that even though this number continues to climb, we have been able to maintain steady performance, actually responding to 90% of these or more within seven days or less. So even with the increase in workload, we're able to continue to respond to those timely. Next is an example of improved efficiencies. We're seeing a shift with more court transactions now being processed electronically rather than in person. In fact, recently, they began allowing for partial payments online. This added, this is an added convenience for court patrons and also helps reduce foot traffic there at the court. And last, I have the employee health clinic. These high standards also translate to those departments whose customer is our own staff. We continue to see increased usage of services at our new employee health clinic. And that is my last slide. I'd be happy to answer questions, and as you all look through the report that you got today, 150 pages or something, if you have questions about any of those specific measures, I'd be happy to coordinate with the departments to get a response back to you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Very good.
Yes.
Next, we're going to talk about satisfaction with the quality of city services, one of our priorities of the council parties. And first up is Action Center, Kristi Yeager.
Thank you. My name is Kristi Yeager. I'm the Public Information Officer. The Action Center's in the Public Information Office. And as you see on the screen, we've got three of our employees. We've got Ebony Avala, Shamika Lee, and Tiffany Sanders. They are primarily the people who speak on the phone to our residents and try to help them with their concerns. Beth Krauts, the Action Center manager, is not pictured. She is one of our loaned execs for the United Way, so she's out at the United Way helping out there. But I really want to thank those employees. They are very patient with our residents, helping them solve problems. It takes a lot of patience to do what they do, and I really appreciate them. We like to think of the Action Center as a one-stop shop for our residents to contact the city with concerns, to get information, and to report issues or to find out about reported issues. We really want the Action Center to be as accessible to as many people as possible in any way that they want to access us. So we have a phone number that they can call. It's been around for a very long time, 297-2535. They can text us with their concerns. They can go to OKC.gov and report concerns online. It's very easy to do that. They can email us. They could download our app. They can go to Twitter, Facebook. Nextdoor's been very, very popular to voice their concerns on, and then we'll put those concerns into our system. We even still get some fax and handwritten letters asking people, people asking us to help us with their concerns. So we want to help as many people as possible. All right, this information, this slide shows you about our resident interactions, and we come into contact with a lot of people every year. In fact, the Action Center staff had more than 100,000 resident contacts in the last fiscal year. Nearly 80% of those ended in a service request, and the other 20% were contacts where we just provided simple information to our residents, maybe about their bulk waste day, or met them face-to-face in meetings and in workshops, like the Code Enforcement Workshop, which is one of our biggest and most popular events. Our top concerns are listed here. Really, since I've been over at the Public Information Office, our top concerns have stayed the same for the last 10 years. And I bet, if you look back 20 years, it's still consistent, it would still be consistent. So it probably comes as no surprise to anybody here that high grass and weeds is the number one concern of our residents. We received about 15,000 calls or contacts trying to get high grass and weeds taken care of in their neighborhood. Number two is yard parking at 10,800. Number three is junk and debris. And then the rest, property maintenance, derelict vehicles, inopable vehicles, they come in at... come in at, at lower numbers, and usually not so much in the, more in the winter months. Those are our winter month concerns. But in the summer, we're really, right now, getting pelted with high grass and weed complaints citywide.
Kristi, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
On the high grass and weeds, do y'all break that out any way between complaints on right-of-way high grass and weeds versus private property?
No.
No? Thank you.
Sorry. So this slide shows the number of service requests received through the Action Center enacted on within 10 working days. So providing a timely, meaningful response is important to the city's credibility. So the Action Center monitors how quickly service requests are responded to. And as you could see, over the last three years, the majority of service requests were responded to in a timely manner. Last year, city departments, which is primarily development services, public works, and parks, responded to 96% of their service requests within 10 days. This meets our year-end target of 96%. And that's say, of those that aren't responded to in 10 days, some of them can be very difficult questions. Sometimes drainage questions are things that really take a lot of time and analysis to, to respond to. So in conclusion, we all know departments are struggling with fewer employees and fewer resources. So on behalf of the Action Center, I want to thank all of the employees who are helping us meet our commitment to residents and uphold these high standards. Does anybody have any questions?
Kristi, thank you.
And then Chris Brownie will be coming up.
Chris Brownie with Utilities. So every time I have an opportunity to talk to staff, I have to remind, remind them, or I don't have to remind them, I get to remind them, that they provide life essential services to every single person in the city every single day. So that's every person, every day. So with that said, I believe we align very well with the city services council priority. In accord with the city council priorities, we developed and implemented over the past year, our core business initiatives. So the, the three LFR measures that I'm going to speak about this morning are concerning customer services, wastewater collection, solid waste collection services, and I believe those three will illustrate our commitment to outstanding city service as expected by city council. So the first is customer service and the percent of calls that we answer within 30 minutes of the first ring. Our LFR target is 80%. This past year, FY 2017, we nearly made our target level. So far this year, we have exceeded that level for a number of reasons. First of all, we combined services within utility dispatch, customer services with utility dispatch, to reduce call times during high volumes. So prior to this year, we had two different sections. We had utility dispatch and we had customer service. So in combining those two, we actually were able to add staff without having to grow the number of staff overall in the department to, to provide additional people to manage those calls when we have a high, high call volume. We modified business processes to reduce the call time, and we trained customer service reps to process the calls quicker. So right now, we're averaging about a half a million calls annually. So our wastewater backups, response time within two hours. Our LFR target is 90%. As you can see from this slide, we exceeded at 90% every year all the way back through 2013. We get over 3,000 calls per year in relation to backups. Two-thirds of them are related to either grease or roots within the sewer system. So this past year, we asked and we were approved to increase our abatement funding for both of those, grease and roots. And in addition to that, we created a commercial pretreatment program to help the businesses within Oklahoma City manage their grease a little bit better. So in solid waste, our target was 95% of the time, we wanted to be out of the neighborhoods by 5:00 PM. So in 2016, we were able to accomplish that goal, and then again in 17. We entered into a new, a new contract with waste management, and we put performance measures in there. And what we found was that most of the delays in picking up trash was related to equipment breakdown. So in that contract, we said, okay, we want you out of the neighborhoods by 5:00 PM. We were able to do that. And then under the new contract, we expected them to do that. And so in order to meet that goal, we replaced all of our aged trash trucks, and, and waste management did the same thing. So we were able to systematically pick up the trash in the neighborhoods and get out by 5:00 PM. So we are actually exceeding our goal. So the last thing I want to talk about is the citizen survey. We all know that there are a number of departments who get a lot of recognition from the customers because they, they are out there in front of the customers each and every day. Fire police, some of the other responding departments get, generally get high accolades from the citizens when we, when we get the surveys in. But, you know, we like to brag about our, our solid waste management services. We're up there hanging right in there with them. We're about 90% satisfaction rating from the customers and the citizens throughout the city of Oklahoma City, and we're pretty proud of that. So with that said, I do strongly believe that we are, are meeting your expectations and providing a high-quality service to the citizens here in Oklahoma City. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Great job. Good survey results. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
I'd just like to comment. I was lucky enough to be able to go on a tour of the Draper Water Treatment Plant last week, and it really is amazing watching the process, the water goes through, to go from the lake, which, by the way, come to find out, Draper Lake does have the best water in Oklahoma City and workforce. Watching it go through that process, and then we've been investing a lot of money in that plant down there. And when you look at the improvements and the redundancy and everything else, I just, I think it's really putting Oklahoma City in a great place for our future water needs. And I appreciated the tour very much.
Thanks, sir.
And lastly, is Eric Weiner, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I've got a few slides to wrap up as we continue to uphold high city standards for all city services. And I think one of the items that continually is discussed and something that's very much a focus for Oklahoma City on the survey, is the number one citizen concern is the quality of city streets. And so what we're going to discuss this morning is the work that we work towards completing pothole repairs. And this first slide that you have is the number of work orders that we've issued the past three years. So you're going to see back in fiscal year 15, we issued over 5,500 work orders. I'm going to show you a slide in just a moment. We average about 19 pothole repairs per work order. But you'll see the decline the past few years, and one of the things that I would note is that typically in wetter years, like 2015 and 2013, we've seen higher number of potholes. In drier years, our pothole count typically goes down. I'd like to also think that a lot of our continued road improvement, either through our 2007 bond or through some of our other programs, is able to also improve the condition of city streets, where we're actually starting to hopefully see fewer and fewer potholes in Oklahoma City. But we still have a high number of work orders. This is the next slide that actually shows the number of potholes. And so fiscal year 15, one of our wetter years, we exceeded over 100,000 potholes in Oklahoma City. These are addressed each day with 13 different work crews. And so they are work ordered every day to go out and just fix potholes throughout the city. As Kristi Yeager mentioned, through the Action Center, either calling 2535, 297-2535, whether they report those to the OKC.gov, or they're using their smartphone app, and we are getting to those just as quickly as we can. Our average response time is within three days, at least as a goal. But this year, we're running lower than the total number of potholes. And then this is our repair. So 80% of the time is our goal, that we repair those potholes within three days. Obviously, if it's raining, it's very difficult to make those repairs until it dries out. But this is the statistics. So from fiscal year 15, wetter year, we were less than 50% of the time in three days. But you're going to see that we're very close to that goal in 17. A little fewer potholes, the 13 crews that I mentioned, we're now running about 75% of the time making those repairs very quickly. So we track the citizen responses very closely. I mentioned the survey, and one of the things that we're going to start reporting is, is we do know that there's a difference between major streets, like our arterials, and our residential streets. The truth of the matter is that we continue to see a decline in the satisfaction of city streets. And so we continue to put money towards those, either through the bond issues, again, today being a very important vote for Oklahoma City residents to be able to get out today and, and consider the vote for this 2017 bond issue and also the 2017 tax, both which have a lot of resourcing dollars in those to help hopefully improve this number. But you'll see that we're currently running on neighborhood streets about a 28% satisfaction. We're less than 20% on our major or arterial streets. But again, as we look forward to additional funding, we do know that we're increasing the quality of city streets citywide. But again, I think as the residence survey, we're also working to improve that as well. So with that, I will also be back in just a couple of weeks, and we'll talk more about transportation system with Jason Fairbrush, Transportation Director, and can answer any questions you have this morning on potholes.
We're going to be calling on you in just a moment. Unfortunately, they're not unique toward seven, so, but we'll call you up in just a moment, please. Any questions for Eric? Okay, thank you, Eric.
Then lastly, I want to highlight the sales tax report for September. Sales tax is up 3.4%, which is good. If you take a look at it, we have five year-over-year positive months that we've had, which we haven't seen for a while. But again, I want to caution, even though we're up 3.4%, the year before, we were down 6%. So we are still below the 2015 numbers on it. So it's good progress. We're pleased with where it's going. It's, it's within our budget year projections. It's actually a little above our budget year projections, but we're still not totally That's all we have this morning, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. So now we'll have citizens to be heard, and the first one is Mr. Anderson, Gene Lewis.
So I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but of course, I had an encounter not too long ago. I'm sure you guys probably are already familiar with that, because I came to the office, as well as the mayor's office, as well as all the council office, and nobody got back to me. Trying to meet up with the chief several times, nobody got, you know, got back with me. So I'm not sure how you guys are running the city, but I got a question for you, Mr. James. How come you are the one running the police department, not the mayor?
Because that's what the charter calls for in Oklahoma City. The charter calls for the, for the police department to report to me, and I report to the mayor and council.
Okay. So obviously...
Excuse me. The microphone's a little close, sir. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Obviously, the only satisfaction I do have is the fact that when I had my encounter, the police came within five minutes. So that was, you know, good response call. But however, I'm trying to understand, I've tried to met with your chief several times, and it has not been successful. So why is it so difficult to, to meet up with the chief if I'm somebody that's visiting your city, and I have a valid reason why I want to meet with the chief to improve your police department, because, you know, they felt big time that day I encountered with them.
Yeah, I'm not specifically familiar with your incident, but these cities right here have you, if you have to talk to you.
Yeah. And I'll be glad to talk to Mr. Anderson outside. We spent, we've spent probably close to two hours talking to Mr. Anderson already. I had Major Don Martin with Spring Lake, had met with him, gave him all the information he needed to sign a complaint in reference to the call that was taken. Also, I had one of my deputy chiefs spoke with, with Mr. Anderson. I have not spoken with him. I'll be glad to speak with him outside, outside of council here for a moment. I know he also wants to speak with the mayor, but at this point, he's been given all the information to file a complaint in reference to the, the call that, that we responded to.
So, so he's the chief?
Yes.
Okay. So I got a question for you. Black population in the city of Oklahoma is close to 15%. How come your body for black officers is only 6%? What's going on with that?
Well, I'll be glad to speak with you outside.
Sure. But I also want to ask you another question. Why don't you have body cameras for a city of this size? I mean, major city in a major country, and you don't have body cameras for officers? What's up with that deal?
Okay, now, let, let me address, excuse me, sir, let me address that. A few years ago, the city of Oklahoma City, we started a body cam program, and, and so vast majority of our officers are wearing body cameras. We don't have all of them wearing body cameras.
What about Spring Lake?
But, but again, after this, so the chief is going to visit with you outside. This is not the, the correct...
But I also want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, because I don't want to play a game here. I'm not trying to be swept under the rug. This is a real issue. Two officers showed up. This is the only crime I had. My skin color and the bottle of water. So why was I subject to being put in the, in the back of a cop car? And, and why wasn't I able to record the incident with the, with the cop? You know what I'm saying? They stopped me from recording by telling me to put my hands by my back. Since I don't have no relative out here, I don't have no family here, I cooperate by putting my hands by my back. I'm thinking he's going to put me to the side and wait for his supervisor to show up. You got two officers, man, two! And guess what? This is the only thing I walked out with that, from that place. And guess what? I've already gone to the ABLE Commission. There's no law in the United States regarding a bottle of water. I walk out with a bottle of water, that's not a crime. Me having black skin, that's not a crime. And I'm here to visit your city. So I'm not coming here to work or try to play basketball or football. I'm visiting, just like everybody else. Just like when you go visit Mexico, do you subject to this kind of harassment?
Okay, now, now again, sir...
And you, I'm ashamed of you that you, you run that district, and you have yet to done anything for that district. There's no Walmart in that district. Why not, why don't you have Walmart there, sir?
Sir.
And you're, you're a district...
Excuse me, sir.
I mean, council, whatever.
Sir.
I'm very upset, man.
Yeah, thank you. We have a three-minute time limit on our...
I understand that, but I mean, I was subject, have you ever been arrested anywhere in the United States or anywhere in Mexico, anywhere in China?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever dealt with that before?
We are not innocent...
I'm asking a question, sir. Have you ever dealt with discrimination, harassment by any police department in anywhere around the world?
Sir, our comments from citizens is not a interaction, it's just...
But, but I am here because you've been hiding from me, sir. You've been hiding from me too, and you've been hiding from me. And I had to pay for another week for my hotel room to be able to see you.
Our next citizen to be heard is Michael Washington.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 8th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73111. This man is actually greatly, profoundly accurate with respect to the disrespect, and as I've been saying many times, coming here, and there's a verification there, about how discriminatory and racist policies and practices are being directed toward African-Americans on the northeast side of Oklahoma City. It's just so having God let that child to, to be exposed with this gentleman coming in. Here he is, an outsider and outsider, forced to put his hand behind his back for a doggone cup of water, a bottle of water? Are we serious here? And we got a city councilman right over here now, is right in the heart and the middle of these things, because he's a coward and refused to accept his response. And I have a right under First Amendment, my belief, sir, I believe that this man is a coward and not doing his job in protecting the citizens of the northeast side of Oklahoma City. We put that man and officer to do his job, not to sit around and disregard and disrespect us, and to fall in and comply with discrimination policies and practices. This is our thing with this man.
Tone it down.
I, I, yes, sir, you're correct. That is a shame, man. That man didn't lie, because I myself was pulled over until I start filing lawsuits on these officers like this here. And you know what they do? When they see Michael Washington, they kind of try to act respectfully. Why? Because just like Michael Washington gave that guy's card, Michael Washington's not afraid of him. Michael Washington will walk up on, why? Because I'm not a dope dealer, don't rape women, don't drink, okay? Don't run over people with my car, so I don't have to, oh, they're going to arrest me? No, 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 no. I don't ride around with anything illegal in my car or call... I don't ride around with anything illegal in my car, or of course, unless an ink pen is. I'm saying here, this man here needs to stand up and be counted. This man needs to stand up and start assessing and addressing our complaints in the African-American community I step on, man. You are blatant disrespect, disrespectful. You don't respect our community. You're lying to them about this so-called redoing or redeveloping the Douglas Center. This man is a liar, come talking about who going to put millions of dollars on the northeast side of Oklahoma City to redevelop this so-called Douglas Center. Well, you know good and well in the African-American community, they're going to put millions of dollars in there for, as they say, African-Americans to tear up. And he's a liar. I want these people that know this, watching this TV program today, this man is no good. And if you have a complaint, please come to me, and we'll take you to the city councils and other places that this man needs to be brought up on charges. This man is blatantly disrespecting the African-American community. He's trying to take our community. Gentrification is right in the middle of this whole thing and separation, and we don't like it. I hate, and I'm saddened that I can't get others to come down there with me and verify everything I'm saying to you. As we go all night, he come talking about potholes in streets, that's great, but he's not talking about educating and protecting by interest with police properties and things that go on as a citizen. I want to thank y'all for this opportunity to sit here, stand here and talk to y'all today. And I, we do need to, as you, you're city council, you need to sit back. I mean, you're not just here to just hear our complaints. You should take action too, if one of your constituents...
You've said it, it's your time.
All right, thank y'all very much, and I definitely will be back. Thank you.
We are now going into executive session.